As amended, I will motion that, please.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, move to the consent agenda, any questions? Then I look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Welcome, everybody, to tonight and appreciate coming out to our first meeting of this this calendar year. Into committee reports and recommendations, personnel.
All right, so we met on December eighteenth and the first item of discussion was the 2024 holidays. They are pretty much exactly the same as 2023, the we did add being closed on Christmas Eve and then closing at noon on New Year's Eve instead of being open all day like we were this year or in 2023. The second one that was discussed were the committees and that is another item on the agenda for tonight. Then we had a short discussion on the fiscal year 25 budget and what would what can be expected. And so we adjourned at four fifty-four.
Any questions for Chrissy? Okay, public safety?
That'd be me. Thursday, December twenty-eighth, we met. We did have a citizen request that came in, the Trask family, about the speed limit on Ranch River Road. They had had some friends that were in town that apparently didn't notice the speed limit change and got a ticket, wanted to know what could be done about it. Since then, we've had some discussions and it'll be on probably on the next multiple public safety topics to talk about everything that's down there. I know, we do know that the violations on all of the sites are significantly down this month for sure, so that's a good thing. McLeod or Christie McLeod from Flock Safety gave a presentation about license, LP, what is it called?
LPRs.
LPRs, which are cameras that can be installed throughout the city. There's some long-term, uh, long-term contracts for two or three years, but still much more to discuss about that on future committee meetings as well. There was nothing decided at that point, it was just a presentation about what could be applicable. Sergeant Weersma was here to talk about the golf cart and UTV policies. This is a been a work in progress for quite some time, so appreciate all the hard work on that by him as well as Chief Banks and anybody else in with it. Right now, the regulations are very vague and not very clear, so they want to put some teeth into a lot of those, especially when it comes to seat belts, where people can sit, where people can use the golf carts, flags and anything like that. So still continuing to work on that and we'll bring those to future council meetings as well. No new updates for the list of camera expenditure money. They did put the dimmers on the lights in the park, if anybody noticed that they dim until somebody goes up to it and then they come brighter when somebody's there. UTV for the fire department's on order. Squad cars are moving right along and we adjourned at four fifty-five.
Any questions for Kate? Okay, we'll go ahead and move into public hearing. First public hearing, public hearing to consider and gather public input regarding implementing plumbing code. Chrissy, do we have any written comments?
No, I don't have any.
Do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Move into then the second public hearing to consider and gather public input regarding implementing mechanical code. Chrissy, any written?
No.
Okay, any public comments I'd like to be made at this time? Go ahead and close that public hearing. Moving to the third public hearing to amend chapter one hundred sixty-six to the City of Hudson Code of ordinances. Any written?
No.
Okay, any public? We'll go ahead and close that, we'll move into general government then. The Hudson City Council maintains the right to waive the first and second readings of the ordinances presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A, discussion action to approve resolution thirty-one fifty-one, a resolution accepting resignation and notice to appoint for vacant council position. And this would be the position that I resigned from in order to become mayor. And this will, the notice will be put into the Hudson Herald then on will be published on January eleventh.
So this is technically a resolution for the council to decide to fill the vacancy via an appointment under our codes three seventy-two thirteen. But you have to publish notice of and then you can make the appointment after you do that. So at your next meeting, you can fill the vacancy with the appointment.
Three seventy-two thirteen is correct, good memory.
Thanks. I might have looked at that code once or twice over the course of the last couple of weeks. You're not the only ones making an appointment at this point.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any others? Rule call.
Lawson.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Item B, discussion action to approve the third reading of ordinance eight ninety-two and ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances of the Hudson, City of Hudson, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to park regulations. And this is to set the hours from six AM to ten PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Rule call.
All right, Reister.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Item C, discussion action to approve the second reading of ordinance eight ninety-three and ordinance amending the Hudson City Code twenty seventeen, chapter ninety-two, water rates, section ninety-two oh two, rates for service.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? Rule call.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Okay, item D, discussion action to approve the first reading of amending an ordinance amending the Hudson City Code twenty seventeen. And that should be second reading too, shouldn't it?
Yeah. Right? Chrissy?
Second reading?
They should have paired together between water and sewer.
Undeep?
Yeah. So.
Okay, yeah, this should be second.
So approve the second reading of ordinance eight ninety-four and ordinance amending the Hudson City Code twenty seventeen, chapter ninety-nine, sewer rate charges, section ninety-nine point zero one, sewer service charges required.
I'd make a motion for the second reading to be approved.
I'll second that second reading.
Any others discussion? Rule call, please.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
All right, item E, discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance eight ninety-five and ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances of the City of Hudson, Iowa by adding chapter one fifty-seven plumbing code and this is adapt adapting the twenty twenty-one plumbing.
I'll make a motion to approve. And then I have a question.
Okay.
I'll second, I got a question too, maybe it's a second one. Go ahead, Kate.
So we are now or put, I'm not against putting in a plumbing code because I think it's a safety issue. I think it's a make sure everything's done correctly. Do we know if there's a, and this is probably a no, we don't know. A, is there a reason we haven't had one previous to this? Is it because we have not had an inspector that's been licensed? And B, do we have an inspector that is licensed that will be able to do this oversee this program? If we approve it?
And I I just, I think just in general, we haven't had like the plum the plumbing and HVA, the mechanical code one. Because we didn't think that we were needing it. But now we're seeing the need because we're also being asked by the state as well, is that correct?
Yeah.
But we do have Nick who is licensed, he'll be able to.
Nick is a master, master plumber, plumber, licensed master plumber. And I'm gonna jump to the HVAC one too, because that's next. He is eligible to take his master in HVAC too, so he can take that whenever he's planning this month to take it.
And then he'll be able to do inspections.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make it simple. This was the first reading or second reading or? It was just the first?
This is just the first now.
Okay, I thought we had it at the last.
No, we set the public hearing.
Set the public, okay, nope, that was all I had, simple.
I got a question. Can you hear me?
Yes.
What, and Chrissy, I can't hear you all that great, but I can hear Chrissy, I can hear you all, but I can hear Chrissy really well. Is this, I mean, do we absolutely have to do this, like the state is saying you have to have a plumbing and a mechanical code? Or is this something we're choosing to do? And and my line of questioning is along the lines of there are horror stories about inspectors and regulations in the City of Cedar Falls and we do not want to become that. And so I'm trying to tap the brakes if at all possible so that we don't become just, you know, such a difficult place for people to do things that are just simple, common things.
And I think, I don't think we're absolutely being mandated by the state. But it will help with our rating and it will help like when we do financial things, is that?
Correct.
Yeah.
And to answer your question about Cedar Falls, we're following the state uniform plumbing code. So technically, they should be following this code regardless. This is just giving us in black and white to be able to go in and do the inspections and document everything.
And then, because I don't know what some of the issues that you feel is with Cedar Falls, is that more of a personnel or them not, you know, were they not done right or?
Yeah, I think in general, we're just becoming uber regulated. And I think Cedar Falls and some of the personnel in Cedar Falls really like to regulate to the nth degree of what they are able to regulate. And I would just say Hudson does not want to become that. And so if this is something we need to do to blah, 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 whatever, whatever, great. But I'm gonna be, you know, ringing the bell for let's take it easy and not go overboard with power trip inspector. Make it really hard for people to build stuff, add stuff. I'm a big.
Right.
Technically, we're adopting the state code that's already in place, right? We're making the state code part of our ordinances. So it doesn't change the obligations of licensed plumbers who do work within the City of Hudson. In theory, Matt, you're right, it adds a little bit of an extra enforcement layer on those individuals to make sure that they're following what they're supposed to do. But in theory, they were already supposed to do what we're adopting.
Yeah. I got it.
And um, yeah, on the other side of that too, you know, obviously as a person who has just had a home built the city, there is some liability if we sign off on a permit or something and something's not done up to a state code. You know what I mean?
Yes, now that we have an ordinance.
Right.
Yes, now that we have an ordinance and an inspector, then we're we're now saying our inspector has identified that it complies with the state code.
Right, which gives the the person purchasing the product.
A little bit more of a assurance that.
The other thing, yeah, I agree, but I would say too, Matt and I agree with you, I, you know, obviously I've grown up in in the trade world too. And we want to make sure, and that's a that's a personnel issue to me, that you want to make sure that our inspectors are enforcing the code. But not, I mean, they don't have to go two years beyond what the code is, you know what I mean, that.
And and we've had some situations where, you know, obviously the building inspector and the contractor and owner didn't see eye to eye. And we've compromised, we've worked that out and so I, I, you know, plan on seeing that continue that way. So.
Well, it should be, like I said, I mean, the the code has to be the code, you know, you've got to do what the law says. But do, we don't need to do fourteen steps past that, but that's a personnel issue that if there is an issue with that, that needs to be brought to supervisors and to to be dealt with on a one-on-one basis, so. Would agree with that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Does this pertain to only city limits or five oh six four three zip code?
No, just city, within the city limits.
All we can.
All right, rule call.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries four zero.
Okay, item F, discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance eight ninety-six and ordinance amending the Code of Ordnances of the City of Hudson, Iowa by adding chapter one fifty-eight mechanical code. And that's adopting then the state twenty.
Matt said so moved.
Okay, so I heard that. Did I, I'm sorry, did we get a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions, discussion? Okay, rule call. All right, Reister.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Okay, item G, discussion action to approve the first reading of ordinance eight ninety-eight and ordinance amending the Hudson City Code twenty seventeen, chapter one sixty-six, zoning ordinance establishment of zoning district section one sixty-six point one one, R six, large lot residential district. And this is adopting in the requirements of the R five into the R six.
Correct, any requirement for R five would apply to R six, especially in bulk requirements.
Especially in the what?
Bulk requirements, so like screening and.
Okay, gotcha.
So that they're consistent. We've been, we've been enforcing it that way, but we didn't, we didn't.
But there's nothing, isn't there?
There's no actual language that says that, so.
Just updating the language, so moved.
Second.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, rule call. Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Okay, item H, discussion action to approve resolution thirty-one fifty-two, a resolution to appoint county committees and mayor pro tem per mayoral recommendation and this is to be like the committees that were listed and then to appoint Kate as pro tem.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Okay, rule call.
Reister.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Okay, discussion action to approve a resolution thirty-one fifty-three, a resolution for approval of the appointment of Chrissy Weersma as city clerk and Michelle Chilcutt as deputy city clerk.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call then.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Item J, discussion action to approve a resolution three one five four, a resolution to reappoint police chief and fire chief.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, oh, rule call. Wyatt.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
Happy to reappoint you.
Thank you.
I should have asked her, do you want to go?
All right, item K, discussion action to approve resolution three one five five, a resolution naming financial depository and that is naming a bank, Iowa.
So moved. Second.
When is our next RFP for banking stuff?
It'll go out this year.
Is it this year for next year?
This fall, yeah.
For two years.
Is it two or three?
Three years, three years.
I thought three.
Yeah, it expires in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Rule call then.
Lawson.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Okay, item L, discussion action to approve resolution thirty-one fifty-six, a resolution authorizing official newspapers for the City of Hudson, Iowa.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Item M, discussion action to approve resolution three one five seven, a resolution to establish twenty twenty-four mileage reimbursement and that is at the rate of sixty seven, sixty seven cents a mile.
I was gonna say sixty seven cents a mile.
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Any other discussion? Rule call then, please.
Reister.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Okay, discussion action to approve resolution three one five eight, a resolution regarding city attorney appointment. And that is with our current city attorney.
Get rid of her.
Well, that came from.
I appreciate the load of confidence tonight, thanks, buddy. That's awesome.
Did you say for, did you motion?
Now I don't know if I want to do that.
Matt, we think you should motion that one.
My motion is to to re-up the contract.
Hey, thank you.
Do we have a second then?
And that was recorded, I'll take a second.
Any other discussion or? All right, rule call.
Reister.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Cook.
I just wonder if I should just not come then. I think a certain amount of times I've thought of that, I look at the agenda and I'm like, how awkward, maybe I just shouldn't even go.
You've been in the worst awkward since you were.
That's true.
And we so appreciate, you know, we wouldn't be where we're at with you.
I know.
It's right now.
I do like you.
All right, item O, discussion action to approve relation, resolution thirty-one fifty-nine, a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-four holiday schedule. And that was with the changes that Chrissy, the changes from this year.
Yep.
So moved, include the changes.
Second.
Any other discussion? Rule call.
Cook.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero.
All right, item P, discussion action to approve resolution three one six oh, a resolution setting a public hearing for amendment of the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And this public hearing would be held then on January twenty-fourth.
Twenty-second.
Oh, oh no, wait, I wrote.
This will, but whoa, let me back up, this will be held when, January?
Twenty-second, the public hearing.
Twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, so moved.
Yeah, that must have been what I.
Too many twenties.
Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Item Q, I don't think we've gone down this far in our time.
Would it be okay if we could have the, Chrissy, screen scroll down so we can see the resolutions that are being called up, please?
Yes. There you go.
Okay, sorry about that.
Thank you.
All right, item Q, discussion action to approve resolution three one six one, a resolution to approve the purchase of in-car equipment for the police department and it showed in the resolution that was for a non-K nine unit and a K nine unit and this is not to exceed ninety-six thousand five hundred dollars.
This was already recommended to be approved previously, correct?
There wasn't any to outfit it, there was nothing in the resolution. We just approved a resolution to
Buy the cars.
To buy the cars, yeah, because we weren't sure what what it was gonna look like.
Right, so moved.
Have a second?
Second.
And this is not additional into the funds to purchase the car, this is cars included in this, correct?
No.
No, cars separate.
It's just the outfitting.
What did we have, the cars, do we remember what the price was for the cars?
They were forty-four or forty-eight thousand.
It's not anything off from what it was the last time we ordered though and outfitted, correct? Because I remember talking about it, we just didn't have it in there.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we didn't have it in numbers at that time.
Okay.
Okay, rule call then.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Okay.
No, it was froze, froze.
Yeah, I did too.
It was, thank you.
Cook.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Item R, discussion action to approve resolution three one six two, a resolution approving the transfer of funds for December twenty twenty-three. And this is just our normal monthly.
Yep.
Transfer.
Yep.
Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Rule call.
Who motioned that, I'm sorry.
Jeff.
Okay. Lawson.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Reister.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
All right, motion carries four zero.
Okay. Item S, discussion, potential action of RFI process and STS broadband concerns. So Chrissy and I met with Sean from STS and he outlined to us what his plans were going to be and kind of some of the work that they've done. We have not quite been able to pin pal, uh, pin pal, pinpoint some of the the details and and things and so I don't, Chrissy, do you want to?
So I thought I was contemplating that C-Band was gonna meet with STS and were to align what STS's capacities were for what was desired.
Yeah, correct. And we did ask them last week, asked STS to meet with C-Band as our advisory, because.
Okay, and has has STS responded to that offer? Okay, so as we sit here tonight, there was an offer extended to STS to meet with C-Band so that C-Band could figure out what STS was and was not capable of doing based upon what you need for your fiber optic project.
And if we do put out the RFI, if we decide to move forward with that tonight.
You already technically did already, you already approved the RFI for the the fiber optic thing. It's about whether or not you want to flip the switch and go or do you want to give STS another week to meet with C-Band before you do that?
I would be in favor of waiting and offering them the opportunity since they are a local company and giving it, two weeks to me is not gonna.
Yeah, that's totally up to you.
Is not gonna end the earth on if we're moving forward this or not. I mean, we've got, it's not that there's not coverage out there right now, we obviously want to continue to improve. And I don't want to see this continue to delay, delay, delay. However, as a proponent of local businesses.
Right.
I would like to give Sean and his team the opportunity, you know, this is the two weeks before or the week before.
So two more weeks to meet with.
Until before the next meeting.
Okay.
And make sure that they have every opportunity to be able to get their name and their foot in that door if they do have the capability to help us out with this.
And you, you're giving them two weeks to meet with C-Band, right?
I would give them, it needs to be on the next council agenda with what we're gonna do, continue to move forward or not.
Not to come back to us, but go to C-Band.
And then C-Band to report to us or whoever to report to us and let us know what the outcome is.
Okay.
Any, Matt?
Sean is here on the call.
Hi, Sean.
Hi, Sean, but.
I'm here.
Okay, that's fine. So if we have any questions of you, we'll go ahead and ask that, otherwise this is just discussion on the council. So. Matt, do you have any? Matt, do you have any comments or questions or anything? Okay, anybody?[1636.14]